Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board. It is 5:00 PM on Monday, February 23rd. I would like to call the meeting to order, please, and request roll call.
Boudreaux?
Yes, here.
Bolick?
Here.
Steaton?
Here.
Brett Howard?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
Poole?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Thank you. We're all present and accounted for. Item three is public appearance, and that is discussed with Mark Martinson and Jeff Grenier of Romar regarding TIF assistance for development of 120 North Main Street. There's a note, TIF number three has a maximum statutory life of 27 years and must close no later than August 16, 2032, resulting in a final flexion of increment in budget year 2033. So we remind trustees that this is for information from Jeff and Mark. We welcome you guys to present your information. It's not for negotiation at present time. This meeting will be later in close session to do that. Okay, good. Welcome, gentlemen.
Well, as Steve said, I'm Mark Martinson, Jeff Grenier. Everybody should have received the documents that we supplied to Mike. Basically, we purchased the lot at 120 North Main Street, which is the old Templeton property, old Steakhouse property for people who have been here for a number of years. It's been sitting vacant. We purchased that last fall, and we're coming to the board to ask for some TIF assistance with that project. Basically, what we're looking at doing is putting up a building similar to the one that we got on 106, 110 North Main Street, the two lots on the other side of Firefly.
Yeah, I don't know. Did you guys all get a copy of the plans and the locations?
Yes. No.
They were in the packet. I don't know why you didn't get them.
I'll get them to you.
Yeah, they're very... I mean, part of our proposal, and I have some copies here if anybody wants to see what it looks like, what the floor plan looks like.
Jeff, you already started with Jirigo. Pass it down while it's going along. Okay, fine. Thanks, Jeff.
Building's very similar, both outside and inside, to the building at 106 and 110. We're requesting the TIF assistance for really, I guess, a couple of primary reasons. One, the difficulty of building on that site and the added costs related to that. And the second large factor, that is the, and depressed isn't right, the right word, but the lower rents that you can get for commercial retail properties in Oregon, which just don't support the construction costs. So you add the additional cost to the lower rents, and a project like this isn't feasible, isn't financially feasible without help from the village. So that's really just why we're here. We did put together one of the sheets, and I'm guessing it's the last one, Mike, the payback schedule. Did you send them all three or just the last?
It's here.
Yeah.
Yep. You got it.
We did include a payback schedule based on the information that we had, that we had, as well as what we received at the staff meeting with the village. And basically, what that shows is that for an $80,000 TIF assistance provided to us, that the village would have to go out and borrow. That would be paid back based upon the increment that the building would generate in about 12 years. Then through the life of the TIF, it would generate some additional funding for the village that obviously would go into the TIF for the remaining five years or so, and then on to the general tax rolls. One of the things that came out of that meeting is that we would guarantee that increment, which, yeah, it's a guarantee, but once the building's done, we aren't asking for the money until the building's done. Once the building's done, obviously, the assessments and appraisals. And what we're saying is that the increment would be enough to pay back that money over the life of the TIF. We've got five years to play with anyway. So, yes, although we're guaranteeing it, it's going to cover it anyway by the time the village would commit lending the funds.
Yeah, and if you could find the money someplace other than borrowing, then you would actually make the extra 3% that we put in there for interest. We go to TIF.
And TIF would be paid back that much sooner.
Be paid back another year and a half earlier.
So I guess with that, we'd answer any questions that... We tried to lay everything out in the two letters. In terms of cost, what we see is revenue and expenses from the building. We base those numbers on $800 for each of the apartments upstairs, which is what we're getting for 106 and 110, and then $12 a square foot for the commercial retail space underneath, which is roughly equivalent to what we're getting there now, and which we feel we could get a decent, you know, decent tenant at.
So do you have any interested tenants at this point?
No.
We've been talking to a couple of people, and they're, you know, the $12 square foot ranges, their max that they're looking at. So, I mean, we shopped around town a little bit when we looked at some of the other square footages around town. They're lower than that. So with the new building, you know, they'd have to do their build-out as well, and then, you know, we would give them a white box. They would come in, they'd do the build-out, so that would actually cost them more money. So in the long run, they'll be, you know, technically probably paying more because they're going to pay for part of their build-out.
The other thing with these rent numbers, Jeff, we're still paying the real estate taxes and insurance, obviously, but the real estate taxes, so it's not a true triple net lease.
Yeah, it's not a triple net. This is a lump sum payment. They pay heat, electricity, that's it.
What sorts of industries have shown an interest without getting too specific, I understand?
Retail.
We had a couple of office.
We've had a couple of office, potentially...
Service type.
Service types and retail, that's basically the... So it would bring people downtown. So...
Yeah, in terms of, you know, buy a restaurant, I don't know. It's...
We haven't looked at that heavy at all.
Kind of laid out, I mean, different, and I'm not sure that that's real convenient for that. Ideally, you know, it could be broken up, and a couple of people wanted smaller spaces. Again, you see the floor plan, long, narrow. How do you break it up, front to back?
Yeah, we've talked to people that are talking about incubator spaces where you go and put a conference room in, you know, a coffee room, and then you put five offices and you rent out each office, and then they would get charged extra for these rooms. That's one of the persons would like something like that. Another person just wants the whole first floor and potentially a garage for retail businesses. So we're, you know, we didn't want to start negotiating any contracts until we knew what, you know, we had for them.
What we were originally going to do here last fall is we were going to put up a sign. We were going to basically put up a sign. We thought, well, we better look at some costs first, because, I mean, we know, we got a good feel what the maximum is. I mean, we're not going to get $16, $18, $20 a square foot rent in Oregon, is the reality of it is. And so we wanted to do that and make sure we were comfortable being able to do it before we went out and say, hey, yeah, we'll build you this building. And then just realize, building at 106, 110 is all right, but there's just not much margin if it's not rented. It's not worth doing, to be honest with you.
Have you had any look at the soil as far as what needs to be done there?
Not specifically at that property. We do have Phase one and two.
Yeah, we have Phase one and two that was done for the property when it was originally bought, and it looks okay, and there's no contamination on the site. So just the contamination that potentially, you know, tiles, whatever, was just, when the building was demolished, it was just pushed into the hole. So that probably have to go out to a site that take that type of waste. And then this is a slab-on-grade building, so we're not proposing any basement, so we don't have to worry about water tables or anything. So carrying out the old foundations is going to be fairly expensive. Hopefully, we don't, you know, Erica's building or Mike's building will fall down.
And that is an issue. I mean, Haven built. That's one of the things we dealt with over there. One of the things that occurred there, just that ended up costing us a significant amount of money, is that their foundation encroaches on our property. And so to draft the easement and to get them to an agree to an easement and to be able, I mean, we, at the time, construction was stopped because we had to take care of that first, because if we dig up our property, their wall falls down. So, I mean, that's one of the, kind of the unknowns. But, I mean, we've been through it down there, so we did, I guess, look at it a little conservatively. Jeff says asbestos tiles, things like that potentially in that basement that we're going to have to haul out, separate, deal with.
So if you do have to completely excavate and dig out everything in that lot and haul it, it's covered in this construction cost?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's what we're proposing, that it's going to be that way. So, hey, we do our work ourselves, you know. I design them, Mark and I, we contract them, so we don't spend anything on it. We have...
No, I wasn't worried about that. I'm just making sure that your estimate includes a complete excavation of the site if you have to, and a complete infill, and then you've got the costs of your sewer and water line.
Those type of things, yeah. Those are all included in there. You know, something like a foundation encroaching on, that's not included, but that you just deal with when it comes up. But again, we're hopeful that it's...
Yeah, I mean, since it's a properly licensed, based, wrinkled building, but, you know, we need a new sewer line, potentially out the bag. We don't know for that one for sure, but we do need a new water line coming out the front, so we're going to cut up the new sidewalk, the new street, put a new lateral in. That's not done.
And it's always fun, fun cutting into a county road also.
Yeah. You kind of close it down so long, da-da-da, a lot of fun.
Would the rents be, where would you place the rent? Somewhere in the middle or higher end, or lower end, as far as current rents, average rents in Oregon?
I would say that for the residential, it'll be, you know, $800, $850. We're hoping for $800, which we get next door, and then downstairs, maybe at the upper end, we'll look at it down.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, so we've got the information. Anything else you guys would like to present right now? So as you see by our agenda, we'll be talking about this in close session later on, the negotiations part, and staff will get back to you tomorrow, right?
Quarter to ten.
Yeah. The next two or three days.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item number four, which is approval of minutes.
And Steve, can I just interrupt for a second?
Yes.
Since there's a mixture of old and somewhat new, and the newest minutes, I thought maybe the four board members that were on the board on 2013 may just want to vote. If Jeff and Doug and Ginny want to vote on it, most likely, only the four of you should vote, and they should abstain on that.
Okay, so we'll do the item eight first.
I would separate that, I guess, a little bit.
Okay, so we have the minutes for January 21st, 2013. We need a motion, a second on those, please. So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? My memory does not go back that far, so.
I would have not.
Anything? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to, we do the next three all together then, right, Mike?
I'm sorry, we're going to show that the three board members abstaining.
Yeah. I'm sorry. And then do the next three, B, C, and D?
You can do this together.
All as a group, okay. So the next minutes we have are January, sorry, June 2nd, 2014, August 18th, 2014, and January 12th, 2015, which was a special meeting. So motion and second, please.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item five is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the amount of $295,000, $914.83.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Whoa.
Questions?
Easy, easy.
Whoa. Jerry.
We just did this last week, so this is a small list.
I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was looking at the Wisconsin Professional Police Association Union dues. Could you explain what that is? Are we paying the dues on behalf of the officers?
We take them off. We deduct them, and then we pay them through the village.
Okay. All right.
So Act 10 allows us to do it for the police union, but not any other union.
Thank you.
Any other questions, men and trustees, on the vouchers? Okay, so seeing none, we have vouchers tonight in the amount of $295,000, $914.83. Roll call, please.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Steaton?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Bolick?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item six is community input. The village's board has established an opportunity for the public to address the board. In the event community members wish to address the board, 15 minutes is provided. Anyone wish to address the board? Nope. So we'll go on to item seven, proclamations and announcements. Item A, any board comments? Seeing none, we'll go to B, staff comments.
And because they're coming in the doors, that gets counted, too, because they're using the facility. It's the wear and tear on the building. So I don't know how else to say, we've been really busy. In our summer reading program, in the months of June and July, 25,000 people came into the building each month. So the rest of the year sort of thins out a little bit, but the summer is extremely busy. If you've been in there during a programming day, you ought to come in and see, Jeff, because it's really, it's phenomenal. It's wall-to-wall people.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Did that answer your question, or... Okay.
Sue, I, on page six, I'm always amazed at this report in that item, public library loans of material to non-residents.
Mm-hmm.
I'm always amazed at what a large number that is.
Yes, Green County, actually, Green and Rock County are two counties that really use our materials quite a bit, and we do get reimbursed for that. And they do send us a check in the spring for the amount of items that they actually check out. So we're quite happy that they check out the number that they do.
Is that because they just don't have the facilities that we have?
Right, or our library is closer to their homes, and so, or they're traveling from Madison South or whatever, and they just stop in and check out on their way home, so...
Anyway, I always find that interesting.
Yeah.
Little card.
Any other questions?
With the focus on the electronic media, what's the trend in hard books, hard copy books?
What's the most popular, you mean?
No, is it trending, is it flat, is it also increasing as well?
Oh, 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 oh. Well, I think we've had a bit of a dip in the hard paperback, I mean, the hardcover books. There are still people who are totally devoted to them and will never pick up an electronic device, but there, every, all the circulation of hardcover books has been dropping just a bit. But nothing to be really alarmed about at this point, I don't think. I mean, the electronic is really convenient for vacations, or if you're traveling and that kind of fit into a suitcase, you can, you know, pack, you know, 20 books onto a Kindle, but you can't pack them into your suitcase, but you can sure, you know, pack your Kindle. So they're very popular, and people are now reading on their phones. So we don't really care how people read. It's the important things that they're reading, so... But it has been dropping. You are correct on that.
I'm just wondering if it might have some implications when you get to the library plant, expansion planning at some point. That's why I asked the question. But that's for later.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks. Yeah, Susan, go ahead.
One quick, Jeff, I want to also explain that we are in collaboration with the senior center, and also the chamber and the school district. We have that big Christmas Eve program, and we had, let's see, 1,200 people come through that evening for New Year's Eve. So that also, it does boost, those things like that that really boost our numbers, and I'm tenacious about counting people, you know.
We can tell.
And I do count the babies, too, so...
Anything else? Okay, so our next, thank you, Susan. We appreciate that report. And our next item deals with senior center, and I'd kind of like to lump the two together and just say, on behalf of the board, we appreciate what the two of you do in leadership of both of those places. They're both real important for the community and do a lot to further a sense of community and connection and communication and well-being in Oregon, and we all appreciate that.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the board, too, so thank you.
Good.
Steve, I just want to make comment. I am on both the COA and the library board, and I'll tell you, both those girls do a wonderful job. They do, they just add a lot to Oregon.
Thanks, early.
Thank you, darling.
Thanks. Okay, so we'll go to item D, which is with the senior center, discussion and possible action regarding approval of peer support agreement in hiring UW-Madison student to oversee the grant at the senior center. Allison?
You all received the memo that I gave you, gave you a brief overview. In essence, this grant is for $5,040, beginning March 1st, ending December 31st of this year. Dane County is not determined if they're going to renew it, but as far as I'm concerned, it could be a limited term employment for the student that I would like to hire in this position. I did have a brief discussion with Lisa, and it doesn't seem to be a problem to have her under the umbrella of the village, but the payroll would be, any admin cost through the village would be covered under this grant, because it would be extra work for Beth and whoever else on that side. Approximately three hours a week, she would be recruiting new people who need to be matched up with a peer for this peer support program, and just continuing, we have five matches now, and that's apparently really good. I didn't think it was that great, but it's the highest in Dane County, so that's why we were chosen. And Stoughton, I believe, has four matches. It takes a while to match people up. It takes a while just to find the correct personalities, to make sure they're going to mesh, but it's very successful when it does. So I guess I just need more to prove that we can continue with this grant.
Okay, thank you. So we'll look for a motion, please.
I'll make that motion. I do have a question, though.
Okay, we need a second first of all.
I'll second you.
Thank you.
So I assume staff supports the continuation of this grant?
It's beginning of the grant.
Oh, okay, whatever.
Yeah, it's beginning.
For 15?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so we have a motion and second to approve the peer support agreement in hiring UW-Madison student to oversee that grant at the senior center. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item E, review of draft 2015-2020 capital improvement plan, and a note that Jim Mann from Ellers Financials will be here on March 9th at 5:00 PM for a meeting with the village board to talk about this plan. So it's in draft stage right now, so we'll turn it over to Mike and Lisa. In advance, thank you for the work you and all department heads have put in on this.
Thank you, Steve. So everyone has a hard copy of the capital improvement plan, and I think rather than me reading it, unless you want me to read the PowerPoint, Steve's saying yes?
We've read it.
Okay. I do want to, again, I want to thank Lisa for her help on this. She spent, Lisa will be working on the audit, and I decided to jump ahead and get this out, so... So we, as I mentioned in the PowerPoint, you know, typically, these are five-year plans, but because the board expressed concern about the 2015 borrowing that Jim Mann's going to come and talk about, Lisa and I decided to include this as a six-year plan going forward. You know, these will be in five-year increments. I do want to make a few highlights from the PowerPoint, so you can...
No, that's fine.
Yeah. I do want to note that, you know, every year, we have some major projects and minor projects, you know, in the years, but we are, and every year, including money to do our equipment purchases and street maintenance. And actually, one of the things I wanted to mention, I don't know if you noticed, that we do show an increase in the crack filling and the seal coating, as well as just the building overlays going forward. You know, we have some larger streets to do, and when you only budget $75,000 for a building overlay, it's very challenging, and so Mark and I want to address some larger streets, which is why we're trying to get that up to about $150,000 a year, which I think would be helpful in the future. I know that when you look at the total borrowing, it's pretty shocking what we're showing. And when we were working on this, I thought about this over the weekend. When Renina used to do this, we used to try to give you a capital improvement plan that maybe wasn't as shocking, that we had this, on the side, we had this long list of pending projects. I think that it was confusing, so I think this time, we decided just to, you know, plug in the projects where we thought they made sense, and then, you know, working with the board, we're going to obviously massage the plan quite a bit, you know, over the next couple of months to get more of a realistic borrowing level, or debt level, going forward. So I'm going to make sure the board, I mean, even though we're proposing this, we acknowledge we're not going to borrow all this money at the time that we're showing, so...
Excuse me, Mike, but we do have significant borrowing dropping off.
Yep, so that's one of the things I was going to mention. Thanks, Jerry. Yep, we in the TIF health here going forward. I agree, Jeff.
Yeah.
I agree.
So I would really, I would like to caution us to think about the terminology that we're using, and while debt is probably the most accurate word, technically speaking, in terms of how we're going to pay for this, it's more borrowing money to invest in the community to make the community more attractive, to grow the community, is what we're actually doing.
Right. And that's sort of, I made the point in the PowerPoint that, I had to think about this, I had to get Mark's opinion on this. I mean, you know, the village, when I got here, we had, we were just ready to install the West Side Interceptor in 2000, 2001, I can't remember when. And, you know, we had, you know, we had Dan Fleming who helped pay for that, and even when we did the, and that interceptor does serve the West Side, including the Alpine Business Park, but the Alpine Business Park was developed by Lightcon. They, we didn't front any of that money. And as I mentioned in the PowerPoint, except for the downtown, which was, we spent a lot of money downtown, we did. We have never really spent a lot of money compared to other Dane County communities. County communities for residential growth, we really haven't done that. I'm not saying we should do that, but it it is something that I think as a policymaker, we should be, we should be, you know, as the board is sitting there, we should be talking about that.
Yeah.
So, but again, how how we, you know, borrow the money to possibly do these things, we always need to be, I know we will be cautious about.
Investment, and certainly there was debt, but it seemed, the comments I've received, I think other trustees, people see that as a great investment, and it's a pretty vibrant downtown for as small as it is.
Yeah.
And that's been, it's been a good investment.
Great, great payback on that, absolutely.
And I think on this same topic, I think it's important to look at that debt, I'm gonna call it debt for now, because it's easy to say, it's just like a business, without that investment or that debt, you can't grow. You have to, you have to be able to grow, and that's where Mr. Mann comes in.
Yeah.
And helps us decide what level of debt we're comfortable with, and then he also helps us monitor the levels so that when it starts tailing off, we start paying it off, we can feather in new debt and keep it at that level, so.
And of course, you know, it gets complicated because you're looking at, you're going out, you know, busy five years, and we know other projects will come along in those five years that we can't anticipate, and so I think Lisa made a good point today when we were talking about this, that you can't just take us up to the max doing these projects because we gotta have some room if we have to borrow for somebody else. You know, for example, if we had a really good TIF project come in, well, we're gonna want to have the the room to borrow for that if we get a good investment on it.
Yeah. That's a good point, Mike, because, you know, I I'm willing to bet right now that even the two thousand fifteen sheet won't look like this by the end of the year, because something will come up that is gonna take priority, we're gonna have to move something down.
Yes, possible.
Put that in, you know, and all.
Well, some of these, some of these are, some of these projects, we already are, you know, like I said, are committed to the the bike trail and the streets, the things we haven't approved are the the engineering agreements at this point.
Right.
But yeah, no, that's true, we, yes, something else could come up, you know, it's still early in the year.
But I'm pleased to see a lot of roadwork, because it's time.
Yep.
Mark says he wants to keep busy, so.
Mark will be very busy. That's actually been something that Mark and I have been talking about the last couple of months, just the ability to physically.
Right.
Coordinate all this, but I keep telling Mark, the bike trail will be done this year, so that.
That project will not be there taking Mark's time.
I noticed the the list each year for Public Works is quite long, so.
Well, that'd be two meetings to go through, Steve.
I know, that's good, we'll bring that back, right? So any other questions or comments on the cap improvement plan that was presented?
So does the board want the the board to do this, or should be doing this through finance? What's what's your, I mean, when I say, I think we should, you know, start, you know, going through the streets with Mark at a meeting and, you know, or maybe streets and one other, maybe his equipment and just, and should we be doing it as a, at a board level, or do you want to go through finance or?
Well, if we go through finance, I would, I think we should televise it so the community can tune in if they have a desire to, and so they know what's going on, what's getting done in the community, or we can do it at the board level, which they're always televised.
I mean, I'd prefer we could just do like a budget meeting where the whole board's here, otherwise, otherwise you're having to repeat yourself, the department head.
I agree.
And and the finance committee will have to be, so I, that's okay with you, we would just.
Yeah, I'd prefer at the board level, I think, I mean, this is big stuff and lots of dollars, we all need to be here to talk about it right away, and then we're all better informed, too, so that'd be my suggestion, that's, okay, looks like that's where we're going, the board level.
Yeah, Mike, if you were gonna hone in on a couple of things to keep the board meetings inside of five hours, I would probably hone in on the affordability and the impact to the residents and the and the reason for it, the, make the case, why are roads, why is it, if we're gonna invest X amount of dollars in roads, why is that important?
Mm-hmm.
You know, what are what are other counties doing, or what are the, what are the timetables for other counties, or what's the, what's the tell that roads need to be done? So so if you could hit those two points, I think that would make it, for me, that would make it a quicker meeting.
Yeah, Mark does a, call it case programming, Mark. Yeah, we do a, it's a a program that Mark and Gary Dish, the Assistant Public Works Director, they evaluate the the roads every.
Every two years, it's a rating, rating system for the roads.
Kind of like tire tread, where you can tell the wear, based on the wear, how much usable life is left, or?
Yeah. I wouldn't put it that way, but yes.
What's that?
I wouldn't put it that way, but yes.
But yes, that's a really good point, I think, that goes back to the the sheets I was mentioning, Jeff, they're really, they're really helpful, there's actually a section, there's this justification.
There you go.
And and so, so maybe, maybe we should start off with streets, I'm thinking this, that really is what is what, maybe we should do that at the next meeting, I probably won't, I'm thinking that actually, you know, we should do, I think we'll start that on the sixteenth, because I think we should have Jim come on on the ninth, let, we should talk to Jim first and then we'll start on the sixteenth.
Yeah.
I need some more time to work on the sheets with Mark and Lisa anyways, so.
Okay. Can we maybe maybe talk about starting those meetings at five o'clock or see if it's feasible for the board?
It's up to you, if you want.
I don't want to vote everybody in for that.
That's fine with staff.
Huh?
Right. Fine, five o'clock.
Five o'clock's great.
So Mark, so we'll start on on the sixteenth at five o'clock.
Anything else on this item, anyone? Seeing none, we will go to item F, discussion of holding a special Public Works Committee